...of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And now a moment of silence. All right, thank you. All right, this is, uh, I'm stating my name for everybody that's on, uh, on the, uh, on the wire here. Uh, I'm gonna read this first. If any of you have questions or anything of the Berkeley group, please state your name before you ask anything and miss Cobb question. Push the microphone. Actually, you probably ought to push the microphone on when speaking and do not speak over another com-
Commissioner.
Commissioner, as it will be difficult for miss Cobb to hear multiple commissioners or speak. So, um, I'll try to practice what I preach here. So hello, miss Cobb, this is Bernie Miller. Just want to say hi and then we're gonna continue on with the rest of the meeting. We'll get to you in just a few moments. All right.
Sounds good.
All right. The adoption of the agenda, is there any changes or anything anybody want to make to the agenda? Or they want to keep it as is? All right, motion's been made by Bill Turner. Executed by Mr. Atwood. Or Milton, oh, Milton?
Yeah.
I thought it was you.
I thought it was you.
Okay, Mr. Milton, I apologize. All right, uh, any more discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion has it. We have no public hearing tonight. Our new business is the, uh, also adoption of the minutes for July fourteenth, July twenty-eighth, August twenty-fifth, and September eighth, 2020. Has everybody had their opportunity to look through it and take any recommendations?
Tracy, do you have copies for signatures?
Um, you can sign the copy, but it's not legal draft, I don't think in your packet, so yes. Just, just take one, well, let me give you one.
Have you been able to go through them, able to run through the motion?
Motion that's submitted and presented.
All right, motion was made by Mr. Comer to take it as presented. Mr. Turner, executed. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? All right. All right, now we're at the unfinished business. Miss Keith and Cobb, this is Bernie Miller. Uh, we'll let you, uh, do their present, your presentation now.
Can you hear us, Rebecca?
Hello?
It helps if I unmute myself, right? So, so good evening, um, thank you for participating along, I know it's a little bit different circumstances, but in, in talking with Tracy about our scope constraints and how well you moved through the last draft that I submitted, we felt like we could do this method, I didn't really need to do a full presentation tonight on the, the last draft. Um, it sounds like you all have accepted those changes and moved on and, and made some other, um, changes of your own at your last meeting on, I think that was Thursday. So what I'd like to do is kind of start by going through some of those items. I received, um, through email, it looks like Commissioner Gretsch put together the twelve kind of agreed upon amendments that you had at your last meeting, and I'd like to just, you know, send you thank you Commissioner Gretsch for that, they were very detailed, I've been through those. I don't really have any questions about, you know, what do you mean, or, you know, how, how should this be worded? Um, those were very thorough and so I thank you for putting that together. I did, um, notice that you had some questions, and I'm assuming the commission had some questions, and so I put together a memo, um, related to those, and I think you all have a copy of that in front of you. Does everyone have a copy of that?
So real quick Rebecca, if you don't mind, what you should have in front of you is the September twenty-second memo, that's what she's about to review. You should have the email dated nine twenty-one, which has the changes from Thursday night's meeting, and then you're gonna have the original, or I should say, the draft labeled nine fourteen. So if I were you while she's talking, I would lay all three of those out and coordinate, that, that's what you should be talking about. Go ahead.
Thank you for that. So, yeah, we'll start at this, uh, memo dated from today, the twenty-second, and the first item that I, I noticed in the email that there was a question was number three, C, and it was asking, um, about the natural resources and environmentally sensitive areas and about, you know, the, the language for that is difficult to create because they are so different and is what's in the ordinance under one twenty-five seventy-eight sufficient. Um, and so my answer to that is actually I would point to one twenty-five seventy-three, number ten and number eleven, um, those are what protects your natural resources, your environmental sensitive areas by not allowing them to locate in wetlands, waterways, floodplains. Um, it also requires that environmental inventory and impact statement, so that makes them kind of analyze that and gives you a full picture, um, so that you can, you know, voice any concerns if any arise from an application. So, um, yes, I think what's there is sufficient to, to cover those items. Then moving into number five, there was a question about why only rooftop, um, for the medium scale in agriculture? And that is because, um, when I was there in July, this concept was brought up about, you know, let's allow the medium scale, you know, and lower usage to subsidize their electricity, um, and, and so I said, yeah, you know, the best way to do that would be on rooftops if you're wanting to include medium scale. Um, most of those operations probably will actually fall under the small scale, um, but if you wanted to, you know, open that up a bit more, I suggested that it go on rooftop. I think that was maybe in some conversation at the end of the meeting, I thought the meeting had adjourned, and there was a little bit more talk about, um, having that be on the ground and, and that sort of thing, but my concern with that, right, at this point is you really would need to have some specifications and some restrictions added if you're going to allow medium scale on the ground, and, and so at this point, I only wanted to, um, apply on rooftops, I think that's the, the best bet, uh, for right now, just to, to satisfy concerns and that sort of thing. And then number six asked about why state code section fifteen point two, twenty-two eighty-eight point one was not included in the one twenty-five, the seventy-three, twelve, and that, that was accidental. Um, I can add that back in, or actually I will add that in, in the next round of edits. Then there is one I would like to, hold on, this wasn't a question, but it was something that I want to discuss with you. One twenty-five, it was in number ten in the email, uh, but one twenty-five there seventy-five D, it, it was a request to strike the first sentence, and the first sentence there says, "The maximum height of the lowest edge of the panel shall be ten feet as measured from the finished grade." And I believe this was, um, asked at the, at the last meeting when I was there, but it was simultaneous with some other questions, and I don't think I got to, to cover this topic, um, but this actually is an important part of, of what you've got going here in this number ten. And that's because we found that if you allow those panels to be higher than that ten feet, and when it rains, it's, it's, you know, sheets of flow coming off those panels hitting the ground, um, and it's gonna disturb the soil beneath and create erosion issues. Um, and so that's why that's there, and that's to help prevent some erosion issues, and, and so I would suggest leaving that item in there. And that's, that's the only, out of the twelve things, that's the only one that really I was like, well, let's chat about that a moment. And so, you know, I'll, I'll open up the floor to, to hear what you all have to say if there's, um, a consensus, if there's some consensus to leave that in, I think that's the best thing, um, if you've got some other concerns or reasons you want to take it out, and I would love to, to discuss that.
Ms. Weekly?
Uh, miss Cobb, this is Keith. Back to that maximum height, I think our real question was, why is it measured to the lowest edge and not the highest edge?
And, and that's because the panels often can, can turn and tip so that, um, the, it, it's easier to get that lowest ledge height and say, you know, even if it tips, it can't go above this line. If that makes any sense.
Yeah, I understand that. Our concern was, and I see what you're saying about the, the water and the erosion might cause, our concern, our primary concern was just the overall height of the panels. If you limit the lowest edge, they could have a four-foot panel, they could have a ten-foot panel, I know this is hyperbole, but they could have a twenty-five-foot panel, and the, the upper edge would be really unrestrained.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
Yeah, the, the upper edge would be unconstrained, and there's no limit on that, so maybe, maybe we limit both the lower and the upper.
So I thought there was already a limit, and maybe I've just never looked at, um, can this go up there now? Let's take a look up here. So we did, um, put in, I, I think it had been missed previously, but the, the maximum line of that item D, uh, say the maximum height of the panel's primary structures and accessory buildings should be fifteen feet. So, so that essentially would be a, yes, the top of the panel, um, you know, cannot be greater than fifteen feet, and the, the bottom of the panel can't be higher than ten feet.
Okay, I understand. Yeah, so what she's saying is, the panel can do this, and if it pivots, that lower edge can't go any higher than ten feet, so when it's mostly vertical, the highest edge will be fifteen feet, and then when it pivots, that lower edge can go no higher than ten feet.
So I have a question, this is Kathy Greck, miss Cobb. If the lowest edge is ten feet and the highest edge is fifteen feet, that only leaves five feet.
No, what I'm saying is it pivots, it pivots, so it could be, that would be five feet maximum if it pivots, so you can change it.
Oh, so you're talking about the operational edge, not the absolute edge of the structure? All right, I'm okay with that.
Unless, of course, we wanted to-
So are we okay? Are we okay with leaving that in to have that, that lowest edge be ten feet?
I, I am, I am, I think, I think the guidance on erosion and water is sound.
And, and maybe I should phrase that differently, it's a little, a little harder when I'm not there in the room to be able to see, you know, head nodding or, or that sort of thing, so I'll, I'll phrase that differently and say, is there anyone to object to leaving in the line, um, that requires that lowest edge to be ten feet? Okay, hearing none, I will make a note that that line, um, will, will stay in, and, um, and so also I'll, I'll just return to the email for a moment. There were some things at the bottom of that email, you know, mentioning typographical errors and some editorial notes. We're in agreement with those, we will, um, fix those as we make the other edits, the one through twelve that were identified in the email, um, and, and so we're, we're happy to do that, those, um, little fixes are not a problem at all. And, um, I'll just open up the floor now to, to see if there are any additional edits, um, you know, what I see coming from tonight is any additional edits be provided and, um, a, a, a public hearing set so that I can begin on those edits, give those to you all, get them to the public to be reviewed, um, and, and then be able to, to have the public hearing, uh, on your new solar article. So with that, I'll just open up, are there any other edits beyond these twelve items,
miss Cobb? That you would like to discuss? Miss Cobb, this is Bernie Miller. I, I still have a question going back to number, to your email, the number five about rooftop. I'm on, just-
I can hear you, Mr. Milton.
Yeah, okay, um, anyway, uh, in your, in regards to the rooftop, we were wanting some, uh, maybe put, put this on the ground. Why do you, or can't we come up with the specifications needed to get them on the ground? Why do we, why do we, why are we throwing, why is this not going anywhere?
You know, I think, we, we can move forward with it, I, I would say it may delay this process, um, if, if you wanted to, to move forward with ground out, because we do need to consider, you know, what are, what would be the setbacks, or do you want to do that the same as utility scale, or would that be something different for medium scale?
What?
You know, what about landscaping requirements? You know, how many acres and, you know, those types of things, um, need to be considered and talked about, and I think it's, um, a little link in this process to, to begin this new conversation, it feels like.
Uh, well, I, I just feel like, you know, granted, there, if you're putting it on rooftops, what's the, you know, uh, what's the difference between that and putting it out on the ground? Uh, there are setbacks on those, on the rooftop stuff, uh, and, uh, I mean, you, you could put some things on there, I, I, I'm just wondering why, I mean, this is going to, to the county and, and, or to the supervisors soon enough, and, uh, this will be made law, and people won't be able to do what they, maybe to do some, uh, to this. So that's why I'm, I'm just wondering why we can't do it.
I mean, if you want to, you know, if, if the group wants to propose some, some language to put in for the restrictions for, you know, medium scale in agricultural district, then, you know, I can certainly put those in, um-
Anybody else got any comment on this?
Is that-
I mean-
Miss Cobb, this is Kathy Greck. You mentioned the, uh, the same setbacks as for industrial solar. Is that, uh, one twenty-five seventy-five C? So the setbacks, a hundred and fifty feet, uh, and two hundred feet with a dwelling? Is that what you were referring to?
Yes, yes, that's, that's the limits for the utility scale.
So you're asking us if we would be okay to apply the same setbacks for the medium scale in ground-mounted ag as for the industrial scale? Is that what you're asking?
Right, if that's the desires of the commission, that is what we can do.
Anybody got any comments on that, for or against? I mean, I, I feel like that was a, a very noble thing we did last, last at the meeting, and, uh, and if we could at least have the setbacks.
So what, you're asking-
That would be a hundred and seventy-five feet on three acre, it's only three acres. So it wouldn't be very many.
So are we gonna leave, yeah, we gonna leave the same setbacks or decrease them? I guess that's what you're asking, miss Cobb, right?
All right, I would need to know, yeah, what you would like to do those.
Since it's considerably smaller, you know, if it was a hundred and fifty feet on three acres, we assume there isn't gonna be much of the three acres left, um-
Well, maybe the farmers should tell us what they think. If you had to put, uh, ground-mounted on land instead of on top of your buildings, what do you feel the setback, do you feel it would be unfair to require the same setbacks as the utility scales, the hundred and fifty feet, or in two hundred feet to dwellings? Are you okay with that?
Myself, I'd just leave it like it is, and promote, including putting them on church houses and farm buildings and stuff like that, is that out in the field?
And that makes sense to me, I would agree. Leave the same setbacks as for utility scales in order to promote them being on rooftop. That makes total sense to me, I would agree with that.
The only thing I'll say, is it, going back a little bit into definition, uh, the only thing I'll say going back a little bit into this area, it has provisions in there for both commercial and industrial applications. Well, what are the setbacks, are they the same as the, same as the industrial scale, or, I mean-
That tree really comes through. Clearly across the, the phone line, can you repeat a little bit about what you said?
So what I, what I'm saying is, is in the medium scale definition, it has on-site consumption of utility power for both commercial and industrial applications. My question is, if we add to that definition, what, what changes from the difference between being a commercial industrial application, and where would the setbacks be for both commercial industrial applications? Are they assumed to be the same as utility scale, or are they a separate, meaning that they're on a medium scale solar site?
So, so for your, um, medium scale in commercial and industrial, well, now there are not any, um, special considerations for it, and that's because typically these are in, more so your industrial areas where you don't have the neighbors who might be concerned, and more than likely, they're gonna put them on their rooftops. Um, and, and so that's why if you're gonna introduce it to an ag area, I would say, let's consider some additional standards.
Well, it seems that we've opened Pandora's box here by trying to open ag to, uh, ground-mounted, maybe we should close the box and follow the implication of what Mr. Turner said and, uh, just encourage rooftops. I was just trying to accommodate the farmers, but if there isn't a strong consensus and it's becoming too complicated, then let's forget about it.
All right, let's move on.
Mr. Chairman.
Yep.
Part of that limitation of only commercial and industrial is somewhat overwhelming, based on the fact that we have so much ag. And I brought that up at the original meeting. It, it looks like we're gonna say that, that this medium doesn't apply to ag? Is that what I'm hearing?
It does on roofs, just on the ground.
Well, the, and the only comment I have, and it's, and, and again, I'm exasperated, but my comment is that it requires a considerable amount of, uh, investigation to put something like this on your roof. So that's my, that was my concern, it still is my concern. The cost of engineering is going to be pretty big for a small application, and other than that, I have no comment.
All right, anybody else? Miss Cobb, you have anything else?
I, I would just say, you know, and, and don't forget there still is that small-scale operation, um, that is, you know, permitted in all zones, um, so, you know, whether it's your neighbor who, you know, wants to just put up a, a little panel, or your farmer next door, or whatever, those can still be done through the small-scale, um, by right application.
All right, are you finished?
Yes, so are, are there other amendments, other things that you would like to consider tonight?
I have something small, this is Kathy Greck, um, in number three, which is your first point, um, you're, you're right to point out that there is already a protection in one twenty-five seventy-three, ten and eleven, when we mentioned not locating in wetlands, waterways, and floodplains, and I am reminded about something that was said last time, uh, in protecting natural resources in reference to the karst, uh, terrain. Well, of course, we can't rule out all karst terrain, because then we rule out a whole this county, but it, would it be appropriate to add the word sinkholes to wetlands, waterways, and floodplains, since we have a lot of them in the county? My understanding is that, that they are identified by, what is it, geology or whatever the department is called? VCR?
DQ.
DQ, I was just asking if we could add floodplains, uh, sinkholes after floodplains, since they were initially within the county.
You know, I would, I would say, you know, certainly yes, if you want to add that, you can add that, um, my assumption would be advocates are probably not going to apply for those anyway, um, I don't think they want their, um, panels to disappear overnight, but, but if you feel that that is, you know, something needed to, to add there, then that could be added.
Does anybody have a problem adding that?
How does the-
Yeah, what does the commission think?
How does the group feel about adding that?
I'm trying to think how, uh, how water quality, how, uh, the water quality people assess, of course, they have, they go out and they assess land to see if it is wetlands, and they protect that area, uh, but I don't know if they protect sinkholes. Anybody know anything on that?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, the, the, the issue is on karst, which is actually, the sinkholes are actually a part of that, um, and we do have a fair amount of county which is shale, but it does certainly apply to a lot of the county which is limestone, uh, but the major threat, the major threats, if we're gonna deal with the threat in water quality, septic tanks and agriculture and protection on- septic tanks, and agriculture, and protection already offered, and those are the areas that we, if we're concerned, if we're concerned about that, that's not the topic tonight, but if we're concerned about that protection, those are the areas that you would have to deal with.
So, if we had sinkholes, so if we had sinkholes to be avoided, so obviously, if you're trying to catch sunlight, you don't wanna be in a depression. But what does avoid it mean?
And, and why, and anyway, as an engineer, you try to avoid that, right?
Yeah, you don't wanna put your equipment on top of the sinkhole. You can put a solar panel inside of a depression for a variety of reasons. One, it reduces the amount of exposure to sunlight, two, it's a risk. A lot of sinkholes are stable, a lot of them not. But the second question is, what is avoiding not being in the sinkhole or not near?
I think the engineering part of it would prevent anybody wanting to do anything beyond a sinkhole. Any engineer would not, any good engineer wouldn't do that.
I agree. And when you delineate a wetland, you go out and you delineate it, there are three criteria you have to meet for it to be a wetland, and they flag it, and they go out, pick up the flags for the survey, and then you have a partial perimeter of a wetland. But if you don't cross that perimeter-
So, you're not gonna put anything on?
Yeah. For a sinkhole, I mean, you can walk out there, you can see the extent of the sinkhole.
So, Kathy, after this discussion, do you think that we still need, uh, something about sinkholes?
Not necessarily, if you guys don't feel strongly about it, I'm not gonna fight for it. I just thought that, since it's a concern, I wanted to mention it. If you don't think it's, uh, necessary, I'm fine with it.
Well, if we do put it in there, I just wanna make sure, like delineating floodplains, there are topo maps that delineate floodplains, they have, they have defined extremities. And the same thing with wetlands, there are credential professionals that go out there and they delineate it, and they pick it up and survey, there's a line. Sinkholes are a little fuzzier, so we'd have to say, certainly, if you're making something specific, that could be, if we do include it.
Something like that's not an easily defined sort of industry thing, is what you're saying?
Not so much, you can send three people out there, you probably get three different answers. Floodplains, not so much, I mean, it's, there's one answer, and it doesn't what it is.
Then I apologize, my understanding was they were clearly defined by whichever department deals with that, you know? So, if that's not the case, then-
Not so much, I mean, DCR probably might there give you a, an idea, you can look at topo maps, and there are some topo maps, but if it's truly a sinkhole, typically, they're changing.
Well, maybe let's not go there, then, if it's complicated.
Well, and engineers would try to avoid it if they see it anyway, right?
Typically, the engineers would, but also the owners of anything valuable. We wouldn't wanna stick any valuable house, or a foundation, or-
Right, right, right. Because you could lose that, that, let's say, a whole, or a house, you wouldn't wanna put a house on a sinkhole.
And you're not gonna be discharging stormwater, or anything like that into a sinkhole, or something.
So, you're saying the sinkhole is so self-evident, that they're so obvious, when you would look at the site, that it's not worth mentioning in the document?
If it's truly a sinkhole, and there's other things like karst windows, or things like that, that, but those are typically ponds, that have an opening to a karst area below that, you can discharge it, or something.
Well, I'm happy to defer, Mr. Weasley, judgment on that.
If we do include something, we just have to be very specific, so we're gonna do it.
Well, do we need to put more into it, or do we not? That's the question.
I, I don't think we do. I mean, I would tend to agree with Jamie, that, that nitrates, fertilizer, and equal matter are way more of an issue than raindrops for a solar panel.
No problem, I'm happy to move on.
All right, more questions?
More discussion?
I have a question for Ms. Cobb. About the terms concept plan and site plan. My, my suggestion would be to use only one term, and that would be the term site plan throughout the document, and that is to be consistent with our zoning ordinance. We have sections on mobile home parks and campgrounds, and they refer only to the term site plan. So, for the sake of consistency, I would suggest that we do not use concept plan at all in this ordinance, but only site plan.
That's a good question, Mr. Chairman.
Was there something else, was someone else have something to add?
Yeah, on, um, all right, we wanna discuss a little bit on, A, reinstate the protection of scenic view sheds, proposed language, in order to protect scenic corridors and view sheds. Utility-scale solar facilities shall not be located within a quarter-mile federal highways, US 340 and 211, US 340 business, and US 211 business, except for natural type. Well, never mind, I got, I just got to answer my own question here, about the natural topology. We're good.
My question, Mr. Chairman, would be, um, in rein, when, when we have this line that says reinstate, um, I, I just wanted to make sure that we were seeing the total protection of scenic views.
So, I can comment on that. I was asked by Tracy, too, if I would kindly put in an email what my understanding of the consensus was, and that's what I did here. So, my understanding is we wanted to reinstate the protection of the scenic view sheds and the proposed language, to accomplish that goal was the following, in order to, which is what I understood that we had agreed upon, and I believe that Tracy agreed with me, and that's what she forwarded to Ms. Cobb. Am I correct, Tracy? Yeah, so I was gonna state no more than that language, that was the extent of it.
That was my concern, that it be no more than that language. And so, I, I just, the question is, does a consultant understand that we're not reinstating view shed protection from panorama, or overlooks, uh, and, uh, because when it says reinstate, it suggests-
Right, no, no, my interpretation of this email, when, when there is proposed language, and it, you know, specifies, quote, what that language should be, that's the language that I will add in. The reinstate actually just helps me find where that was in our, our, you know, in our ordinance, where that needs to go, along with the, um, section numbers and that sort of thing. So, you know, when, when she has provided quotes, what is quoted is what I intend to put into the document.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any more?
Did you hear my suggestion about the words replace concept plan by site plan?
Yeah, and, and thank you for bringing that up again. Someone else was talking, Brad, that ended that, and I thought they were adding some agreement or disagreement with you, but yes, um, site plan, we can, we can use that, and I saw that you mentioned, you know, make sure that that's defined. If, if that's not already defined in your ordinance, we can define it.
Yeah, my concern was to be consistent with other parts of the zoning ordinance, such as the, uh, manufactured homes and campground, um, sections. They all refer to site plans, there's no reference to concept plans. So, to be consistent, if we had site plan all through, that would be great.
So, we'll be adding that definition, we don't currently have a definition for site plan, FYI.
Okay, okay.
If there's not a definition, then you go in there, or at least gonna do it.
This, the, the solar regulations will be incorporated into the zoning ordinance, so it'll be applicable.
All right.
Just Chairman. Uh, this is Mr. Holsinger. One of the things that we had spoken about in our first in-person meeting was, uh, one, to kind of make sure that you understood the, the zoning requirements, uh, which are about maybe to change, but right now, we have such a high percentage of ag, we just talked about that. And the other thing was to make sure that indeed this ordinance provided sites, it didn't eliminate all sites in Page County. And I think the thought was that perhaps the consultants would take a look at the ordinance as it is currently drafted, and be able to let the Board of Supervisors through the Planning Commission know that indeed there were sites, that there were possible locations. Is that something that the, um, consultants are gonna do?
So, I, I note, um, to the, to the last draft, when I was there, um, last time, we did talk about some mapping, and, and saying, okay, when these items are applied to the county, you know, what is left? Are there sites left? How much acreage is, you know, left as possibility? Um, and so, your GIS person, Josh, his last name escapes me, but, um, he did develop some maps, um, and that was gonna be part of my presentation tonight, was to go, kind of walk through those maps, looking at, okay, when we apply, you know, this group of restrictions, you know, that it must be an ag, that it's gotta be within a certain distance from transmission lines, that it has to avoid wetlands, that it has to avoid steep slopes, when we apply those, okay, what does it look like? And then, you know, now let's add on some other layers, when we say there has to be away from towns, or other sites, and, and those types of things. Unfortunately, when a, a lot of these twelve changes take place, that changes what that, what those maps look like. And so, I can't use those maps, um, to, to kind of show that to the board. Those, those maps change, those numbers of acreage changes, um, and I can't say, okay, this is how much acreage you have, you know, still available for solar, I don't know the answer to that at this point. If your GIS person, you know, was available, if Tracy could coordinate again with him to create those maps, um, for the board, then, you know, certainly, I would be happy to, to share those, and explain those with the board, but, um, at this point, I can't do that.
I'm just gonna follow up to say, just keep in mind, those maps that Josh worked on, based on the draft that was gonna be presented tonight, some of those maps literally took three days to collect all of that data, because he puts it in, it has to run the system, it takes a lot of work to do those maps. And so, I didn't, Rebecca nor I had the heart to go to him and say, after all this work that you did, you now aren't gonna show them, because the data has changed. So, going forward, with that being said, if, if, if I'm gonna go to Josh, and I think the Berkeley group is on the same page, because Josh, again, is the one who does all of the work for these maps, then we need to be sure this is exactly the data that you want to see, because it takes a tremendous amount of time and effort to generate these maps and maps. So, please keep that in mind.
And I would agree, Josh and I, you know, sent a lot of emails back and forth confirming information, and, um, I will say, I'll give Josh Bravo, he, he's excellent GIS man, he, he did a good job with, with what he, uh, he looked for.
So, if the Board of Supervisors would ask if there's an available site, the answer will be, we don't know?
Or we have to wait a few days to get that answer?
We would have to incorporate the edits that have been done, first, as of last week, and then, of course, any changes that are made tonight, um-
So, if whatever's gonna go to the public hearing, then we would have, then we would have the new maps made.
You could, if, if that is what you want.
Or wait until after the public hearing, and then, yeah, we can do that, it's a better route. Until after the public hearing.
I, I would, I would suggest after the public hearing, if, if you're wanting maps, because, you know, public hearings, you know, there may be, um, you know, I, I know that you're gonna, you know, trust and need to, to make these edits that you're requesting, but, you know, if there is an error, or if the public stands up and, and makes a valid point, and you say, yeah, we should add that in, I would hate for that to, you know, undo, again, his hard work. And, and so, I would suggest after the public hearing, when we, when we know this is the draft that you're sending to the board.
All right, any more comments? Do you have anything?
I haven't done it, I'm a lady. But we're talking about, one of the reasons that setbacks, you described some of the difficulty just now, of, uh, us talking about things like how far from 340 to 11, those issues, but within, within the hopper of many somewhat redundant controls, we have this thing called service areas. And we're gonna avoid service areas. I get, I've gotten a couple of comments from people that are in favor of solar, not very much in favor of solar, asking me to make sure that I understood exactly what that area was, what a service area is, and why it was called service area. And it seems like that might be something that is somewhat particular to Page County and no other jurisdiction. You have a comment on staying out of service areas, and what that might mean?
So, so, it's particular to Page County, and that you use a different term than what other localities use, the concept overall is not different from other localities. Um, it's referring to areas that you have depicted in your comprehensive plan as areas that you are expecting growth, so, you know, obviously, that's gonna be sort of around your towns, um, and, and the maps in your comprehensive plan show that, and, and identify that as service areas, so that's what we're talking about in the ordinance, when we, when we mention those service areas. It's those areas around the town that has been selected for kind of the next growth impact. And, and that's typical, you know, in lots of localities, they call them different things, um, but they do usually include them in the, in the solar article, um, because they want growth there, and they're trying to, you know, keep the other areas rural, typically, um, and so, you, you steer growth to around your towns, and so, therefore, you wouldn't want a big utility, uh, scale solar facility taking up that space. Does that answer your question?
Is it possible here locally, that that was referring to the fact that Stanley, at one time, referring to the fact that Stanley provides water that goes way out into the county, and therefore, the Stanley service area is the area that Stanley provides service to, in terms of water? Is that possible that that was the reason we have it?
I do not know the, the discussions behind the, the comprehensive plan and, and those areas, um, maybe Tracy can provide insight on that.
Well, I'm just reminding the commission that they use the term service area, and we have a town that, where the water supply served to the county, uh, far exceeds the area of the town. So, it kind of makes sense, to me, it makes sense to think of that as the service area, because, uh, you have water service there. Uh, that's my only question. Thank you.
Yes, I have, um, about 10 points that I wanted to make, and I can reassure you, they are not, they're more technical, and terminology, they won't change the maps. In 12573, number seven, I was wondering if we could add ground maintenance, fencing, landscaping, and before the term the cost of the decommissioning plan. Meaning, we're trying to provide, uh, surety. We're, we're saying here a proposed method of providing escrow surety or security for the cost of the decommissioning plan. I'm proposing that we add escrow surety or- I'm proposing that we add escrow surety or security for not only the decommissioning plan, but for the ground maintenance, fencing, and landscaping in addition to the decommissioning Meaning, they need to be bonded with some kind of insurance for the maintenance, the fencing, and the landscaping, not only the decommissioning plan.
That is reasonable. I mean, that's something that typically I see communities put in the conditions with their applications, but that is, yeah, acceptable as well.
Is it okay to add that, or does anybody have an issue with that?
All right, we're okay.
In 12576 seven, and I'm aware that this is a question that will probably have to be addressed with legal, but in D, there's a, actually, E, there's a mention of letter of credit. I'm a little skeptical about that form of surety, because that gives a financial picture, and we have a banker here, I'm sure, who would maybe be more knowledgeable than I am. A letter of credit would give the financial picture of the company in question now, but we don't know what their financial picture will be in thirty or forty years. So I would feel more comfortable if the term "letter of credit" was stricken.
Now, this is John McComber. So a letter of credit is actually a surety that's posted by a bank. So, I mean, generally, the difference between a letter of credit and a performance bond is just a letter of credit is backed by a bank. A performance bond is generally backed by an insurance company. But no, so if you have a, if you have a letter of credit, the bank has to honor that. So if your financial, whatever deteriorates, the bank had to underwrite it to sort of deal with that. So the most common example of this is like when you do a subdivision, and you have to get a letter of credit, and the bank basically is the one to look for at that point. So that's what happened during the crisis. A lot of banks had letters of credit on these subdivisions. The contractor or developer went bankrupt, so the bank still had to give the city or the county or whoever the money. So, yeah, letter of credit, by the letter of, what an actual letter of credit is, doesn't, it's irrelevant. They have to honor it.
Okay. In 12575 P, the lighting fixtures that are supposed to protect the night sky, I was wondering if maybe we should specify the height of the lighting fixtures, because we say the panels and equipment is only fifteen feet high in other section. And I was wondering if we should specify that the lights should be turned off at night except for maintenance and emergency purposes. So what I'm proposing is to add lighting fixtures shall not exceed fifteen feet, as approved by the county, shall be turned off at night except for maintenance and purposes, period, comma, and shall be, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. It's something minor, but I guess we want to avoid them looking like, you know, baseball stadiums all lit up at night.
I can understand that, but what about security?
Yeah, for maintenance and emergency purposes? Oh, you mean that they would want them lit up for security?
You know, like, you know, yeah, like you would a building or anything else, you leave a light on there. It's probably their main reason.
Two hundred acres lit up at night?
Well, it's probably more creative than anything.
I was wondering, because we say something about the night, we say something about the night sky?
Well, that's the downward facing aspect.
Right.
Yeah. Well, I don't know, does the height bother you to specify fifteen feet? And so I guess there are two separate issues, the height and turned off at night?
It's the height of the panel, fifteen feet, so you have a full view of anything, of the structures. I mean, night is not gonna interfere, and the panels aren't gonna be doing anything. Yeah, so.
So the panels, just from my understanding, Keith, the panels, when they're not doing anything, are in a horizontal position, yes?
That I don't know. They may have a different rest position.
Okay. But they would not be at full tilt, I would imagine, so the lights at fifteen feet would be okay, yeah?
I think the lights at fifteen feet would be fine. I guess the question is, should we ask somebody, maybe, what do they do at Sparkylvania or Surrey? I don't want to put an arbitrary number out there, not having asked anybody, having no, being ignorant on the issue, and just being arbitrary.
Ms. Cobb, what is your experience with the height of the lighting fixtures?
And so unfortunately, we have not put anything in our ordinances regarding the height. I have seen localities, when applications come in as part of the conditions, they will address lighting if their ordinance, you know, doesn't already.
So are you suggesting?
And I would say, you know, my experience from, you know, seeing facilities, you know, they're not, yeah, big athletic stadiums, you know, lit up at night. They do like some, you know, security lighting around their building and that sort of thing. I've seen them putting in conditions, saying that, you know, that those lights need to be sort of automatic to put on at a certain amount of time. I would say a bigger issue is during construction. I've, you know, been in a locality before that, you know, lighting was addressed in the conditions of the special use permit, but it wasn't considered during construction. And there were neighbors who, you know, had to see a lot of lighting during the construction of the facility, you know, when there's no trees and landscaping, you know, that haven't been put in place yet to block that lighting.
So is that maybe something we should address in the conditions?
I would say yes, you know, if you can't, you know, settle on something right now, I would say that, you know, something to keep in mind, that is something that you can condition in the special use permit.
So should something be added to Section 12578, to that effect?
No, and I would say, I think in your email, you brought up about, you know, having more extensive fill-out conditions in 12578. And, you know, you certainly want those in your special use permits, but I would say you don't want to actually put it into your ordinance, because you want those conditions to be site-specific. You know, your special use permit is of special use that's supposed to consider, you know, this particular use, this particular design, go through this particular site. And so then you list out all of the conditions ahead of time, you're not really considering the specifics of the site. And so, you know, you want to leave that leeway to make those specific conditions. And, you know, we've listed some here, you know, conditions that say, hey, these are really important, and these should be, you know, in all cases. And then, you know, it's up to you guys to consider when permits come forward, you know, how to adjust landscaping, how to, you know, adjust lighting requirements, and all of those other specifics that you might want to consider.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So, does the Commission think that we want to add something about the height or the night, or forget about it?
Chairman, I thought we discussed lighting once before, so perhaps I'm mistaken, but I thought we determined that that would be something in the special use permit.
So how many lights are we talking about?
Well, that's the point, is what you're dealing with.
Have to be determined by the site.
There you said, I see. So that's why you recommend a special use permit.
Pretty sure we wrote this vote ashore once before, but I don't mind discussing it.
I think we may have missed, we didn't take some advice from our consultant.
Well, if we read Section P right now, it reads, "Lighting fixtures as approved by the county shall be the minimum necessary for safety and or security purpose to protect the night sky by facing downward and to minimize off-site glare. No facility should produce glare that will constitute a nuisance to the public. Any exception shall be enumerated on the concept plan and approved by Page County."
That's precisely what I remember we wrote in it.
This is approved by the county.
Exactly what we wrote.
Okay, well, if you feel it's well enough, then that's fine. I would like to go back to 12575 I, and we agreed that we would add native to non-invasive species, as per Ms. Anderson of the Shenandoah Valley Alliance request. And I realize now that we've added it in I, but we haven't added it in F. So to be consistent, I think we should add it in both. Meaning, just add the word native and non-invasive. We've done that in I, that was agreed upon, and I think that's been done. I think we should probably do that in F as well. Just to clarify, I is the ground cover for the site, and F is the buffer zone. And I would also like to draw your attention to the fact that Ms. Anderson's sent us a number of emails, of which we have had copies, and we've never actually addressed any of her suggestions. And those are professional suggestions, and I think we should at least take a few minutes to consider some of them. So what I was gonna propose is beyond adding native and native, and non-invasive to 125AF, that we add something to say that the plantings, you know, in the screening need to be healthy. Because if they start dying, then we won't have effective screening. They need to be replaced if they're damaged, and we need to specify some kind of height. We don't specify a height of tree to be planted, we're gonna be ending up with, you know, little things that are two feet high, and they're not gonna offer any kind of buffer zone. So here, and I like the text that she proposes, and that's in the attachment that Tracy gave us last time. I have condensed her suggestions. I would add at the end of 12575F, "The effectiveness of screening shall be maintained as the plant material matures. Unhealthy and dead plants, as determined by the county, shall be replaced within one year of written notice issued by the county. Trees shall be a minimum, be a minimum of six feet in height at the time of planting, and shall be planted in staggered rows of ten feet on center." That gives us an effective buffer, because if not, we have no definition of how that's gonna be, neither in height or in density, nor what happens to the trees if they die. So I think that was a really good sentence, and I thank you, Ms. Anderson, for bringing that to us. I will add to the Commission that there was quite a lot of suggestions by Ms. Anderson. I did not consider a lot of them, because I thought they were too detailed, but I managed to just condense it into adding native and non-invasive and the effectiveness of the screening. To me, they're not unreasonable. What do you think, Ms. Cobb?
And I do have a copy of that as well, and I like how you've condensed that, and I think those are valid points to make. That's one thing that, you know, I talked with Tracy about a little bit, was, you know, did the county, you know, have standard requirements about height and, you know, that sort of thing? Because, yeah, you're right, when, if you just say, you know, do landscaping, then, you know, they'll put some little thinly Charlie Brown tree up and say, here's your trees. So, you know, certainly, if you want to call that out here, you can. You know, you could also do that in conditions for having, you know, a landscaping section in your zoning ordinance, but you're not that far along yet into your zoning ordinance amendment, so, you know, I don't know if you all want to add that into this section.
And I don't want to be facetious here, but if we introduce this into the zoning ordinance, maybe it can be an inspiration for the rest of the ordinance, so that poor Tracy doesn't have to deal with water buffaloes and unproven screen.
I believe consensus, everybody agree with that?
Bang, they have bang feet.
All right. We agree with that?
Okay. Wow, we're making great progress. In 12578, just a small matter, I believe we would be well inspired to change the word "may" to "shall" in conditions. This is called a conditional permit. Well, in our county, we call it a special use permit, and most other counties, it's called a condition, a conditional permit. So we really have to consider conditions. It's not optional. We can't give them a blank check. So I would suggest replacing the word "may" by "shall." At least they should consider them. 12578, first sentence, "The Board of Supervisors shall consider, consider, conditions" instead of "may."
We can try to tell the Board of Supervisors what to do.
Well, it's worth a try. I mean, you can't really have a conditional permit without any conditions, that's all I'm saying. I'm not saying we should tell them what to put in those conditions, but at least there should be some there. My suggestion, my two cents worth, if you guys don't feel comfortable, that this is an ordinance, and I think a conditional permit should contain conditions.
Well, there's like "shall" seventeen other times on that page, so one more time shouldn't be a big deal.
Yeah, it's worth a shot.
Okay. In 12578 two, so I guess we're gonna use the word "site plan" under B instead of "concept plan," since you all agree. I was wondering if we should add here what happens if they don't construct and maintain and operate with compliance, in compliance with the site plan under B. Should we say, "Any significant deviations or addition will require review and approval by the county?"
Tracy, what happens when people don't comply with the rules?
Of the special use permit conditions? They have to be notified, they have to be given a timeframe to correct the issues. If they don't, then their SUP can be revoked.
Do you need more than that?
I guess what I was trying to say is, if they have a, I don't mean an actual violation when everything is in place, but if they have a site plan that has significant deviations or addition, let's come, let's say they come with a site plan where the solar rays are gonna go here, and then they decide to move them to there, and that's a significant deviation, can they just do that without consulting with us again? That's the point I'm trying to make here. How much can they change the site plan before we tell them, wait a minute, we're gonna have to take another look at that and approve it? That's what I was trying to cover here.
Does the site engineer, do the county engineers have any say in it?
We don't have it in the engine.
Well, no, I mean, it has to match the site plan, but it's not, I think this is before you, Kathy, but, you know, we literally have a campground that reduced the number of sites, but we started to modify their special use permit, because part of their special use permit was their site plan, and since they were like moving campsites around, they had to redo it. So, yeah, if they don't, by definition, if they don't match their site plan, then they're not applying.
I don't see this as an issue. There's already a process in place, I guess.
Do you feel that you have sufficient protection for that, if they come back with significant? What I'm referring to is during one of the SUPs that was under review for a solar facility a year ago, there was many changes made to the conditions at the board level. And it was just a discussion, but there was no technical review of what they would be, and neither the Board of Supervisors nor we are professionals able to review the consequences of those changes. And I'm thinking...
Well, they shouldn't, in my opinion, and they shouldn't be approving that. If they don't know what they're approving, we shouldn't be voting for it. it.
I agree, I agree. But it seems to me, well, I guess here's where I'm thinking. We're dealing with developers who are smart, who are going to try, who are going to try, like all developers, but especially when they're backed by beaucoup, beaucoup, beaucoup of money. They're going to try and, and get away with everything they can. So they're going to try and make changes, and if we don't tell them, well, wait a minute, they're going to say, well, what are you going to base, you know, what are you basing on that? I don't see anything in your ordinance that says that I can't make changes or they need to be approved. That was my concern, have something here saying a significant deviation or addition will require review and approval. It's pretty minor, actually.
What if something, what if something's discovered? I think that's what happened in our earlier case, which meant that a change had to be made or should be made. It's not always, as you say, you need a better trap.
Yes.
Sometimes you get a better trap and you slap the good guy, so. The question is, are, do we, do we think, in a world where we don't even have site plans, don't even have an ordinance for site plans, that we're ready to be so detailed? You know, perhaps we are. Perhaps we are ready.
Would you require them, if it deviated so far, would you require them to come back to the planning commission and/or supervisors?
That's why I was trying not to get there. I said we'll require review and approval by the county. I was trying not to go, to who? Maybe Tracy, maybe us, maybe the Board of Supervisors, depending on how significant a deviation. I was hoping that if Tracy thought it was significant enough, she'd bring it to us.
And then do you got to find significant?
Well, I, I think that you might have an easier answer to this, is that the special use permit is going to dictate how that's handled. So the special use permit's either going to say, we want a picture of where every panel's going to go, and it has to go there, or it'll say, you know, here's a map of where the panels have, you know, whatever it is, but the, the special use permit will dictate how you determine whether they're in compliance or not. Does that make sense, Kathy? So again, in, in one instance, you may have a situation, for whatever reason, where the county's site plan requirement is very minimal, and then in another scenario, they may require a site plan that is really, really detailed. And so then, because that site plan is attached to the application, it'll delineate how detailed they have to sort of follow that.
I totally agree. I was just trying to be more precise about the process in case there were deviations. I totally agree with what you said.
But yeah, so that's the way they, they...
Just to have a process. But Tracy, what do you think? Because you're the one who would be handling this.
I know that Rebecca, Rebecca and I have not talked about this, but I've talked with Melissa about this. Part of the zoning ordinance overhaul of the 125-54, I think that's what it is, specifically regarding special use permits, that section is going to be looked at. It, it does need to be updated. It does, it does talk about modifications to permits, but we really don't have a process, hence that's why the campground had to come and say, go through this whole process for them to say, because their condition was specific in saying they had to adhere to that site plan. Um, so I think that's something that we can address through 125-54 when we're looking at that. That's my opinion.
So it sounds like good.
So what you're saying, we should address that in the overhaul of the zoning ordinance in general, rather than specifically? I'm okay with that, that's fine. I did not realize that that was, let's say, I did not realize the extent of the issue.
It isn't.
I was only considering it for this particular...
We don't even have an application for modified S U P right now.
All right.
Okay. This is another detail that I hit in 128. When we, and this, I'm going to formulate it, I'm going to formulate it in a question for you, Tracy, and I apologize, I would have brought it to you today over the phone, but I wasn't able to reach you.
What section can you give me in?
Well, it would be in conditions.
Okay.
When we issue a building permit, right, I assume that we ask for a site plan at that point, right? Do we ask for a construction plan, a construction mitigation plan? Should we be requiring those? Or is that automatically the job of the building inspector and the, for the issuance of the permit? Because then again, we require a site plan, but should we also require a construction plan, mitigation plan? All of these inputs that I'm bringing now come from Mr. Kofi's P E S memo and the addendum and the conditions that he suggested, they don't come off the top of my head.
Oh, all I can say is...
And I hope you don't hear if you don't mind, Tracy.
Please.
So, um, yeah, I would agree, and actually what I was going to offer, but I mean, it turns like you, you have our earthly group's past memo, but I can also offer up some other examples of conditions from, from other localities. Again, I wouldn't put them in this document, but it's good, you know, for Tracy to have in her back pocket when applications come forward to say, okay, yeah, we should add, you know, these things in here. But, you know, for your ordinance, I don't think you, you know, have to specify all of those, but, but yes, you know, requesting those, construction plans, mitigation plans, those would be good items when a, a conditional permit comes forward.
So what I'm hearing, don't put them in the ordinance, but put them maybe in a document at some point to be established with Tracy as guidelines for her, as recommendations for conditions, yes?
I, I don't think that it has to be something that's formal, um, you know, I, I know when I was in, you know, Tracy's position, I had a file that, you know, I kept with, you know, some, some thoughts that I could, you know, refer to from time to time when, when stuff came up. And so I think just something simple like that, and she's got a copy of the, the past memo, and, and we're happy to share, you know, some other conditions and things from, from other localities that she could, you know, it's the kind of file to have on hand to refer to.
Thank you. Something that I'd like to bring up that was a reflection that I have based on some problems that were had in North Carolina with sites that were given an S U P for X amount of years, and they had a power purchase agreement with a utility that ran out before the duration of the S U P. Let's say the S U P was thirty years, the power purchase agreement ran out of, you know, for a certain price after twenty-five years, and then they abandoned the facility because they were no longer competitive, meaning they couldn't operate their facility to be within the price restrictions of the P P A. So I was wondering if maybe we should add that a power purchase agreement with a utility is required for whatever duration of the S U P we put in the conditions, to avoid sites being abandoned because they're no longer competitive. And I know we haven't, I know we, we haven't mentioned any duration of the special permit in the solar ordinance, but maybe this is a time to have this conversation. Should we maybe have some guidelines for the duration of the permit and also say that the power purchase agreement needs to follow the same duration?
Jonathan, what do you feel about that?
Well, I think the first thing is, in, in the decommissioning section, number one actually covers that, because it says if, if it goes out of continuing service for a year, then that's when they have to remove it. So I think we've covered that part. The second part is, you're really not going to be able to match the special use permit period to the power purchase agreement period, because they're not going to have that until, you know, some point after we, you know, we have to do our thing before they can even go to state corporation commission, and then they, you know, at some point, then they can try to sell it. But, you know, we're really kind of the first process, so they're not going to know what that period is anyway. But no, I think that's a good point, which is why it's in this 125-76-1, that says solar facilities which breach the end of the term of the special use permit of their useful life or have been in active and continuing service for fewer than one year. So it does cover that, that if they would just abandon the project, then they would just be forced to go ahead and decommission.
I agree with that. I was just trying to preempt them going out of business or that risk of them being, going out of, of business and for us having to decommission them by trying to see if we required a power purchase agreement from a utility company, then we could match it with the S U P, so as not to be confronted with the issue of decommissioning in that case.
So one thing that, that can be added to, I wouldn't add it to this document, but one thing, one of the conditions that can be added to the S U P is for them to provide you with that purchase agreement, so you are aware of, you know, what that says and what that term is. So then you can, you know, kind of be ready. It can also, you can have conditions that say, you know, if the power agreement, you know, changes hands or ownership changes hands, then the county has to be notified. The whole of those things are conditions that can be placed on the special use permit that help trigger, you know, the county to be made aware of changing circumstances and the possibility of, hey, this site may need to be decommissioned, you know, in this timeframe.
And number nine, I think, does that, because the ownership, the operation, or the power purchase agreement, they have to get us written notice within a couple days, so. Okay, we're not going to have that on the front end, but whenever they get one, they will have to be.
Mr. Chairman, I'd just like to remind everybody, we've had that discussion before. The discussion is the term of the special use permit, and the term of the special use permit is, just as all people have just stated, everybody's correct, but there is absolutely no reason not to follow the recommendation of the consultants, because they're basically mirroring what we already decided. And that wasn't, had to be, anything like that took place not in the ordinance, and not as a requirement of the, of this particular document, but it's something that takes, that would take place at the time that you're setting the ordinance. And I'd like to remind you, we've set recommendations out for fifty years, and it's been changed by the county Board of Supervisors to five years. So spending time on this is just redundant, extremely tedious and redundant.
Okay, and I have one last point, and that's the last one, is that I was wondering, and, and this comes from the definition that you struck, Ms. Cobb, when you wrote a disturbance zone. I'm a little concerned that we should maybe add in 125-75, a section that covers how many, how much, how many acres can we develop at, at one time? I'm a little concerned to see, we've never had such huge developments in Page County, so we've maximized the developer area inside the fence of two hundred acres. If they were to develop and landscape, and not landscape, you know, disturb the soil and start grading two hundred acres at a time, I'm afraid that's going to be very difficult to oversee. We have said that we would delegate that to third parties, but I was wondering if maybe we should allow a, a development of so many acres at a time? Let's say for two hundred, we say, well, it has to be done in four phases, fifty acres at a time. And that is for compliance and enforcement purposes, to make it easier on the county to be able to supervise what's doing, what's being done, and to be able to enforce erosion control.
And, and those are valid concerns and something that localities have utilized when they're, they're looking at big sites and, you know, requesting them to only be portions at a time and make sure those portions are completely stabilized before they, they move to the next section. But that's physically done in the special use permit, so, you know, again, kind of taking a look at the site that's being proposed, and, you know, is this a, a two hundred acre site that, you know, relatively flat, they've got, you know, good erosion plan with this, you know, or, you know, is this, you know, a site that is really hilly and, you know, is really large? And so I would say definitely take that into consideration with each special use permit application, and that might be a, a condition that you add on that application, on that permit.
You got anything to say about that?
Yeah, I, I would be fine just leaving it open, especially since we open it up to third-party people. I mean, we do this all the time, and you get inspectors in there, and they can cover all that, whether it's the actual E N S, compliance of the plans, whether it's ten acres or a hundred or two hundred acres, you can get a team in there to do that, especially with something in the county. And you start meddling in the means and methods, it really does affect the economics of what the contractors are able to do. The county may not have done it, but the industry has, they've done it for several years, whether it's linear, like quarterage, or whether it's something large, like big developments or landfillers or something like that. And as Ms. Cobb pointed out, we can do it in the special use permit, and it's back to the site-specific aspects of it.
Anybody else have thoughts on that?
Well, I, I would just piggyback on what Keith was saying, and some of that will actually be the impact of the area, too, because if you've got a contractor, let's just pick the biggest number, the two hundred acres, I mean, if you've got a, if you've got an excavator that has the capacity to go in there and move it all at once, then you're going to have a lot, you know, you're going to have more traffic at the site for a shorter period of time. And so that's the other thing, depending on where it is, you may want, you know, less traffic over a longer period of time, or you may want more traffic in concentrated period of time, so people don't have to deal with it anymore. So that would be the other thing, is, because yeah, Keith's right, I mean, our, our industries have been able to manage humongous projects, so that, that shouldn't be a constraint out there.
The only comment I want to add is I, I totally agree with what you're saying. There's a lot of large projects being managed, but there's just not a lot of large projects having been managed in Page County. And I was just a little concerned that it would not be a burden on county staff to oversee projects which, the magnitude of which we've never seen. That was my concern here. So if you have any suggestions, we'd welcome them. And we also don't have anything indicating screening and buffering should be provided during the project development. We've left that, you know, we said we need to have a buffer and the screening, but we don't say when. So I don't know if that, is that a concern? Should we be providing the screening and buffering at the beginning, or will they do that typically at the end?
They'll typically do that at the end. The landscaping and everything will usually require them to warranty, of course, this is different, because they're not, it's not terminated, they're not walking away, they're going to, so we typically have them warranty all the vegetation for a year in the land deals, and they can do that at the very end and make sure that they establish...
So we shouldn't be requiring them to do them, to do that in the beginning in order to protect the impact of the construction? You know what I'm saying? To minimize the impact of the construction, adjacent properties and so on.
We could certainly ask, but I think you found a lot of them getting damaged at the place.
Well, that makes sense. Okay, thank you very much. And I think that's all I have.
Jerry? Keith? All right. Bernie Miller and...
Mr. Chairman.
I thought I asked him what before. Go ahead.
As long as we have...
It's been served for a long time.
One of the things, one of the things that we saw in the, the written presentation that we used on the seventeenth, I believe, was that off-site structures had setbacks. And I just, I know we haven't had a chance, I don't believe we've had a chance to talk about off-site, anything that pertains to off-site for a project. I see something in writing in your response, but I don't think you gave us an opportunity to talk about that. So my, my question is, to the consultant, will this final graph mention off-site electrical facilities?
So there, in the email that I received, number nine, I believe it is, asked to reinstate the last sentence for 125-75-C, and, let me try to pull that up real quick. So, and, and yeah, that last sentence, it all put patients and utility foot yards and any other, so... other associated equipment must also comply with the minimum setbacks. So I think there was a, a decision last time to move away from, you know, having different setbacks for the substations and switch yards that are not located off-site and, and just include them to say that they have to be 200 feet from existing dwellings and 150 feet from property lines. So is, is my understanding of that correct, or is there something else?
That's not how I recall it. That's why we have the question about it. Our concern was that, at, at the time when we were working on this, your offer was silent on some of the electrical devices that might have to be on the property. It, it wasn't mentioned. And because it wasn't mentioned, we wanted it to be mentioned, but it was on-site. And we wanted it to have the same setbacks as anything else that was on the site. Now, we had some concern about off-site electrical development, but we felt we had no control over that normally. It wouldn't be a part of the project maybe if it was off-site. Maybe it would be a part of the utility needs if it was off-site. And I don't think we felt we could, we worried about it, but I don't think we felt we could control it. And so my thought was, if it's a part of the project, then technically it is on-site, no matter where it is. And so I think probably this is just confusing, and maybe gives people the impression that should the electrical utility decide that something was necessary and want to put it in, that, that now they have to have setbacks, and in reality, they don't.
So I'm not sure I'm following what the, the current desire is. Is it the desire to include a last statement that says all substations and utilities, which yards must also comply, and to remove the C2, which talks about, you know, that are, are separate from the, the main parcels? Is it, is it the desire of the group to delete that?
My desire was to know what it was going to say. And of course, now you need to know the desire of the group. That's a different thing.
I guess, let me translate. You would like for it to have the same setbacks in the rare instance that there could possibly be a parcel. So if you're, Jared might have a big farm, he might have a couple smaller parcels that were great-grandfathers and great-great-grandfathers. He might have a parcel that's over here, and he could put his off-site substation, even though his project is over here. In that instance, it would be subject to the same setbacks as if it were on-site.
I, I think that's still on-site. I think that's on-site because it's a part of the project.
Is that considered on-site if it's a separate parcel?
I, I was searching for that answer. So in my mind, I said, well, okay, it's not, it's not hooked to it, but at least it's a part of the property.
Well, let me, let me ask it a different way. So, Ms. Cobb, if we included that language, does it do any harm?
Include which language?
The language that off-site switch yards and electrical facilities are subject to the same setbacks as if they were on-site. Does that do any harm?
It, it doesn't really, I mean, it, it takes up more land, would be my only, you know, thought. If, if you're, if you're wanting to, you know, preserve some more of the agricultural and, and being able to have that use, then, you know, for something that can be, you know, fairly small, you know, depending on, on the size, then, you know, 150 foot setback might be a bit much. And, and that's why, you know, suggested, you know, doing something less than that, having, you know, 75 feet landscaping and that sort of thing. So, you know, but it's entirely up to you guys. I will say, most of the time, it is on the main project site and would, you know, be included in, you know, with the, the other fencing and the other setbacks and those types of things. But there are instances where there's not, you know, the, the transmission line that they're getting to is a little further down the road. They're, you know, maybe at that max that you're allowing them. And they are going to, you know, not already have a substation there to tie into, and maybe they got to, you know, create their own first. And so for those instances, I just wanted to propose something to consider and still allow those setbacks. Because, yeah, typically, yeah, it goes to, you know, it, it's not part of this application. You might not see it, but, you know, in this case, it would be, and you could, you know, get a chance to require some setbacks. And so, you know, up to you guys, if you want to set this off-site ones, also have to be the, the 200 and the 150, or 75 and 150.
Again, I appreciate your, your efforts there. It seems to me that what I was trying to eliminate was confusion that if the utility adds something, if the utility adds something, should people feel that they are going to be required to have setbacks? And is there a way for you to make this clear, that you're not talking about the utility adding something, you're talking about a part of this project? And any way you can fix that, it's fine with me.
If I may interject, if I may interject, Ms. Cobb, I think that when the commission last week decided that they wanted you to reinstate, pardon my word, the deleted last sentence, we wanted to reinstate the, the two lines that read, "All substations and utility switch yard and any other associated equipment must also comply with these minimum setbacks." We had had that in there. You had suggested taking it out, and we, we had a consensus last week to put it back. So maybe this is what we need to be talking about. Because then that means it's 200 feet and 150, whether it's on-site, outside, everywhere. And I think that would cover what Mr. Holsingers is concerned about.
Yes, I mean, when, when I agree that, then, you know, yes, if you're saying all substations and utility switch yards, if that's going back in, then, you know, yes, I assume that then the off-site is, is being deleted. So if, if that was agreed upon, I'm okay with that.
And it was agreed upon, so...
And maybe then, you know, the clarification isn't needed.
Good. Thank you.
It was agreed upon, but it, but it still appeared, it's still there. Now, you know, the question was, are we just eliminating that part about off-site? We're assuming that these things are going to be on the site, a part of the project. Is that, and then therefore, they have to have this normal setbacks. And again, I, I want to make sure everyone understands, this particular document was silent on those facilities, and that's why it came up, because it wasn't, switch yards was not even mentioned. And then as it was mentioned, we wanted to have the same setbacks. So, any...
Mr. Holsinger, if you look on page five of the draft that was submitted tonight, dated 9/14/2020, oh, you're, you're, you're correct. It is still, yes, you're correct.
Sorry, thank you. Thank you.
Yes, you're absolutely correct. It is still deleted, Ms. Cobb.
Well, with the 9/14 doesn't, Tracy hasn't had time to do the 9/7. Yes.
There are no more edits are going to be done to this document until we take it to public hearing. I don't have time to do them, and it is, it's not in our contract with the Berkeley Group to do any more edits until the draft's going to public hearing. So that's why we are, that's why we have three documents spread out in front of us tonight, and...
So I see this, I understand Mr. Holsinger's concern. We'd like to see all substations and utility switch yard and any other associated equipment must also comply with these minimum standards reinstated, and we don't want to see any other provisions for off-site.
Correct.
So we said that in number nine, right?
Yeah, that was my understanding of number nine.
So we're all good.
So perhaps I just didn't understand. Nonetheless, I thought it was important. Mr. Chairman, maybe one other question for the consultant? Because it appears that we're down to that. Balance between ownership rights and the good of the general public. And it's the thing that makes the job so difficult, in my opinion, to wrestle with that. And I just wondered how the consultant felt about protecting ownership rights in this document, as well as the good of the community.
That's a loaded question for, for us all. You know, we are, are consultants, and, you know, we've gone, gone to lots of localities, and we've been accused on both sides of events. That, that's the interesting part. You know, we've, we've been asked, you know, do we work for utility-scale solar companies? We've been asked, you know, are you completely against utility-scale solar companies? You know, so it depends on, on the person and their personal stance, the, the, how they feel, you know, this document serves them. I would like to say that it does provide that balance, that we are, you know, protecting the community, considering, you know, what this change may bring to the community, and hoping that it's not a, a negative impact and trying to make it a positive impact. But also not being, you know, a, a complete burden to, to an applicant who wants to do this. But, you know, there are things that they need to be respectful, mindful of, and that the county needs to, to be aware of for, you know, those bad apples, unfortunately. But it does allow for, for good projects to. So I, I think it does have that balance.
Thank you very much. I have one small, small thing. If you'll bear with me, and I just now looked at my notes. When I asked you and you approved to put, as per Ms. Anderson's request, the ground cover shall be native and non-invasive to match what we had agreed before, I wonder if we could add as well as pollinator plants? Because pollinators are a huge, huge, huge issue now worldwide because of the bees dying. It would be a feather in our cap to have the protection of pollinators, meaning if they put ground cover, they put grasses, they put native grasses, clover, it would be great to have some pollinators in there. I think just to have that little word in there would show us as a really, as a community caring about our environment. And that's something so small, meaning if they're going to plant, you know, ground cover, they'll put some pollinators in there. So if you're all okay to add pollinators in, I, I think that would be awesome.
Y'all for it? Y'all for it? We agree.
Thank you, gentlemen, and I. That's all for me for tonight.
All right. Do you have any last comments or anything, Ms. Cobb? Or we will move on.
Well, I mean, so I guess we're ready to go to public hearing then. So when is the, I guess, when is the meeting that we can have it at?
We can do the next one, which is October the 13th. That gives us enough time to advertise.
So I have a question about that. When you advertise a public hearing, what documents are you going to advertise the public hearing to be about? You're going to say it's about the solar ordinance? Which text is going to be given to the public to look at so that they know what to call it about? So when shall we have the draft? Surely, we should not be sending something to public hearing until we have a draft to agree upon and to look at. Then we agree to send it to public hearing.
Well, we, we have. We've got all the stuff we've talked about. Everybody's agreed on it. Now, the consultant needs to compile everything, but we've agreed everything. So then they'll take basically these three pieces of paper, turn into one document, and then that's, that's what the public hearing will do. So, yeah, we, I mean, we've done that. And then, you know, yeah, whatever happens.
I mean, it would be nice to see the document, is my point.
So per your contract, you can compile all this and have it ready within a month?
Yeah, I can, I can compile the edits from the, the email and those that we talked about tonight, and have those ready prior to the, to the public hearing.
Well, not much prior, because people are going to want to look at these documents.
Absolutely.
You know, have it out on the county website or wherever, here in the county building, but they need to be available at least, what is it, two weeks?
Yeah, I, I agree with, with our chairman. We should have the document.
The ad has to run for two weeks. They could. The ad for the...
The ad, yes, but what about the, the...
So we won't put, thankfully, we don't have to put this whole document in our newspaper. We can generalize the ad.
We have to have it available.
The draft will be available online.
For how long? At what time?
As soon as we get it from the Berkeley Group. So Rebecca, I guess the question for you then is if they would agree to have the public hearing on October the 13th, what is the earliest that you could get us the final draft that would be reviewed at the public hearing?
I could, I could get you, I was looking at my calendar here. I can get you, you know, this draft probably by, by the end of the month, so September 30th. So that would provide a week and a half of, of review time.
So, okay, so the deadline is September 30th.
So then when do we have to have it? Based on that, Tracy?
So...
But that's not two weeks.
But if we, so we could do this, I can do this too. I can advertise in the Page News and Courier on October the 1st and October the 8th. So that means by the 1st, which if she's saying by the 30th she'll have it, we will have a document to post online, and you all will have it in your hands, prior to it coming out in the newspaper on the 1st. We could hypothetically, also, we could post, we could run one week and the... We could, we could run one week and the Daily News record on October the 2nd, and then another one in the Page News and Courier on October the 8th, which would give her a couple more days. But if she's saying she can get it to us by the 30th, we would have it...
Yeah, we got plenty.
We would have it in time to put it on the web for the day that the paper came out. And that would be...
How fast can we get it on the web?
As soon as we get it.
Right, okay.
So I have a question, and forgive me, it's probably a very naive question, but let's say that there's a typo or some kind of mistake in that draft. It goes to public hearing. I assume we're not going to vote on that very night of the public hearing. We're going to take it back and look at it, and we have a chance to make a minor amendment at that point. Yes?
Well, you can make changes at the public hearing. We do it with SUP conditions. We do it with, the airport ordinance, prime example, the, the most recent one that you all did, the, the amendment regarding the airport. I mean, we changed language the night of the public hearing. So you could change the language at the public hearing.
I think the answer she seeks is that you can vote that night, or not. You have the choice. But you can, and we do some nights vote, but...
We just did not have that one meeting.
But you don't have to. You can hale for a period of time, not forever, but the answer is vote.
And changes can be made. Thank you.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Basically, we don't have to just vote whatever is presented.
Yes.
Everything, everything is pretty normal that night. You could probably vote on that unless there's a lot of controversy or something.
Thank you.
Well, actually, Mr. Chairman, it, it's up to the, any member could pose the vote. The vote with the term. You don't want to read or to think that this will be delayed. It will depend on how, how that night goes. But a single member could bring it up for a vote, get a second, and it could be, it could go. And so you might be in a situation where you're waiting for another day, or you feel that there needs to be another day. And in this case, it can be either. Doesn't mean it will be the one you choose. It can be either.
But as long as we can bring up any minor correction... But as long as we can bring up any minor correction that night, after then, I don't have any issues.
Yeah. All right. So my motion is, we take this to public hearing, whatever that date is, the 13th through...
We're taking that on Thursday.
It's on a Tuesday. It's your next regular...
Yeah, yeah, it's the regular meeting day.
It's on Tuesday.
I had made that motion earlier, so I'd be happy to second his motion, that we do that.
So we don't have any more meetings between now and then, is that correct?
That is correct.
Right, she'll email it out when she puts it on the website, I guess whenever she gets it. But again, if you have it, it's just in three seconds.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Maybe a little confusing, but we'll look forward to receiving it from you, Ms. Cobb.
Okay, the motion was ready?
And thank you for your patience with us, Ms. Cobb.
No problem, no problem, happy to help you through the process.
All right, the motion was made and seconded. Could you have a roll call?
Mr. Middleton?
Yes.
Mr. Warner?
Yes.
Mr. Huffman?
Yes.
Ms. Gregg?
Yep.
Mr. Atkins?
Yes.
Mr. Holsinger?
Yes.
Mr. Turner?
Yes.
Mr. Weekly?
Yes.
Mr. Comer?
Yes.
And Mr. Miller?
Yes.
The vote is unanimous.
Great. Okay, well, thank you, Ms. Cobb, and...
Thank you all, have a good night.
All right, thank you.
You too, thank you.
All right, I don't have a chairman's report. Do you have anything, Tracy?
Just a couple of things. There are the stakeholder reports from the Berkeley Group in regards to the stakeholder meetings and the public input meetings, is included in your package. I encourage you to review that, and just read over it. You know, once we get through solar, hopefully soon, we're gonna start the joint meetings regarding the complete overhaul. So, probably beneficial for you to look over that. I do have a pending S U P that's gonna be presented at the next meeting. As long as they want to sit through, as long as the applicant wants to sit through this public hearing for this ordinance, so I'll talk them into about that, is for auto repair facility, I'm sorry.
Could we run that first?
The public hearing has to be first on the agenda.
Okay.
Yeah. So I'll talk that over with them. And then also, the electronic participation in meetings that was due to be on the agenda for the next meeting, do you want to put that on that one with all of this going on, or do you want to put that to the work session in October?
I'm thinking, let's give ourselves plenty of time on the, definitely at the public hearing, so let's not, let's put it...
So at the second meeting?
Yeah.
Okay, and that's all. Thank you.
So I have a question. Is the public hearing gonna be held here? Because there can only be one, two, three, four, five, six, I don't know, there's not even 10 seats here.
It will be held here.
It'll be...
And it will be available as it is, has been, via the, for the public. Of course, we have limited seating, but it is available. We will do, I'll talk with Regina, we will solicit for comments through the website, like we've done in the past, for those that can or don't want to attend, so...
And what happens if 20 people show up? Are we gonna do like the town of Luray did? Ask them to wait outside, and one can come in when the previous speaker has spoken and can go out? I mean, in case we have a lot of people, how are we gonna handle that?
I don't have an answer for you, but open to suggestions.
Yeah, absolutely, to the extent people can give just a written thing up front, and that probably makes it easier, but, you know.
Yeah.
And I think the last time we had this discussion, we determined that maybe a sign at the door could let people know that that would be at least, at least minimum requirement.
Could there be a speaker maybe out in the hallway, so people could hear what's going on?
Just turn it over.
Oh, on the phone, yeah, okay. Yeah, forget about the phone. All right. You have anything else, Ms. Cliverback?
No.
Okay. With that, a adjournment?
Mr. Karen, I'm just...
Have a good evening.
All right. See you, Mr. Wilson.
I'm sorry.
Yeah. It's going day by day, that's all.
I want my fireball.
As you see, the crowd is wonderful. I'm just told you that I have a good evening.
You too.
How are you, man?